Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I would like to call the June 23, 2020 Issaquah City Council Study Session to Order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24, the governor issued Proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act. The proclamation has been extended through July 1. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. Typically, we take public comments after each agenda item at study sessions. However, due to the additional logistics of the virtual meeting, we will be taking all comments at the beginning of the meeting. If there was anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments, please press asterisk 3 on your phone now, and we will call on you using the first six digits of your phone number shortly. Council President Hunt will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember D. Michelle?
Here.
Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Council President Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh, I believe, is excused from the meeting tonight. In addition, the following city staff are participating in tonight's meeting. We have City Administrator Wally Bakowicz, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder, Interim Public Works Director Bob York, Management Analyst Jean Paul. Also with us tonight at our meeting is Sean Corn with HDR Consulting and Ed Seabron with Cascade Water Alliance. Other city staff may also be in attendance and on hand for questions. For those members of the public on the call, we welcome you and thank you for joining us. And lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all of our meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, state your name each time before speaking, mute your microphone when not speaking, and if you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, please continue to use the chat to indicate when you wish to speak. Identify yourself before you ask a question or participate in debate. Now for the agenda, we have three items on our agenda tonight. The first is public comment. The second is ID 0634, water system improvements, and the third is ID 0702, city services assessment relating to the Development Services Department and cost recovery. So I will ask the clerk if anyone has signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening.
No, no one has signed up in advance to speak, and there are no members of the public on the call this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. So I guess that means that we move to the next item of our agenda, which is ID 0634, water system improvements, presented by Interim Public Works Engineering Director Bob York and also Sean Corn, Senior Economist, HDR Engineering. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman, and good evening, council members. I trust everybody can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Tonight's topic is water supply options. Presenting with me tonight, as mentioned, is Sean Corn from HDR Engineering. He's a Senior Economist, rate specialist. And if necessary, Ed Seabron is a Chief Economist and Treasurer of Cascade Water Alliance, since we'll be talking about a new option that involves Cascade. I welcome Ed to this meeting in case there's questions. Next slide, please. Purpose of tonight's item is to update the council with additional information and revised alternatives related to water supply and water rates. The direction requested tonight is to identify or advocate a preferred path for water supply and water rates based on the presentation and the other information provided in your packet. My intention tonight is to take a very complex subject and hopefully simplify it and make it quite understandable to those of you that are, especially those that are new to this topic, which has been discussed before in front of council. So I've changed the slides up a little bit. I'm now, first provide a background, a brief background, then I'm going to tell you the recommendation that we have, then I'm going to introduce all the options we looked at, and then subsequently discuss the advantages and disadvantages of each option, talk about the risks and contingencies of a selected option. Then Sean will provide the detailed rate analysis associated with each option, and finally we'll review our recommendation and request direction. Next slide. Just a brief background. The council in October of last year heard a presentation about the subject matter and requested a reanalysis of our water supply options and also requested that we just adopt the already adopted rates that were scheduled to be implemented in 2020 without any additional rate increase. So since that time, we've had plenty of time to reevaluate the options. There's new Cascade Water Alliance options or revisions to existing options that have been analyzed. COVID has happened, so there's a priority to deal with the financial consequences of COVID. We have additional demand data available from our actual usage since the water system plan was adopted two years ago. And that shows us that on the peak day, which is a very important driver of our demand measure, we've actually been flat the last three years. So we've taken that into account in our updated analysis. So we've done this thorough reanalysis really from the ground up, and the reason we're bringing this to you tonight is not only is there a driver to address certain water quality issues, but also to, the clock is ticking on adopting new 2021 utility rates. Our current rates are set to expire at the end of this year, so this is a timely matter for that subject. And we also need to determine and ask council for council direction on the water projects necessary to meet our interim near-term improvements. So here's the end of the story before the middle of the story. The recommended option we have tonight from the administration is to proceed with what we call discounted CWA water. First of all, for this and all the other options that we're going to present tonight, we've done some adjustments, and we can maintain next year's rates equal to this year's rates. In other words, a zero rate increase for 2021. And I'll explain how we got to that, got to implement that shortly. To get discounted CWA water, we have to shut down one of our wells because the agreement with Cascade would be discounted water is only available if you take some of your independent supply offline, and that's what we've analyzed and have proceeded to evaluate. By the way, Cascade has a surplus of water and more water available than they can sell, and therefore they're willing to offer this because it has a win-win gain for all seven members, including Issaquah. So we would proceed to shut down the well, purchase the discounted water, and finalize an agreement with Cascade to do so. We would also do some small adjustments to our system, which would mean additional water. Chemical feeds at our various wells that will remain in service, the Rizden Wells and Gilman Well 4, so that when we bring in new water, it will be compatible with our current well supply. I'll go into that in future slides. This option would defer the centralized treatment plant operational date to as late as 2034. We feel like we can go that far out because the discounted CWA water is available until that date, and if demands increase, we can also purchase additional CWA water at the normal rate to match demand. So this gives us a flexibility to push the central treatment plant out to early to mid-decade 2034 before it would have to be in service. We need to monitor the situation to make sure that our assumptions are correct when it comes to our demand, our future demands. This slide is quickly put together to show how complex the Issaquah water system is. It's for a system of our size with some 35,000 customers. Some of our waters provided to some of our citizens by Semamish Plateau Water District. But this is a very complex system serving three different mountains, elevation adjustments of around 1,000 feet from the valley floor to the upper zones. So I've taken the liberty of simplifying this complex into a simplified block diagram on the next page. Slide, please. Here's a very simplified schematic of what our water system really looks like for the purposes of explaining our different options. We have three supply sources. One is the Gilman Wells. We have the Rizden Wells, and we have, since the early 2000s, we have Cascade Water Alliance supply that comes from Bellevue through town and at various takeoff points provides certain parts of the city with purchased water. And that pipeline also serves to provide Semamish Plateau water a certain percentage of their water needs. So our Rizden Wells and our Gilman Wells serve the valley floor, Squawk Mountain, and currently they serve Talis as well because the Cascade, or the groundwater is a less expensive source than purchased water from Cascade. Cascade goes to the Issaquah Highlands exclusively since 2015. Also Cascade water wheeled through Bellevue's system serves certain portions of Cougar Mountain, namely Montrose and Lake Mont, and also the South Cove neighborhood, which we've acquired from Bellevue in 2017 as part of our system. So Bellevue water is really Cascade water that we pay Bellevue to deliver to our customers through the Bellevue system. Next slide. Don't know if you can see this very well, but to give you a perspective on where our wells are, there's the Gilman Wells in the central part of town near the post office, and the Rizden Wells are located farther southeast, both very near I-90. The Cascade Water Alliance, what they call the Bellevue-Issaquah Pipeline, is not shown on this map, but it proceeds down Newport Way from Bellevue, and it goes through town and turns and goes up to the neighborhood where Semamish Plateau, where water is delivered to Semamish Plateau Water District. Next slide. So here's our four options. There's a great number of options, but our analysis greatly simplified all the permutations into four sets of options really that have the same cost benefit and financial implications. Number one is, discussion purposes, is shut down all our wells and convert our whole supply to Cascade Water Alliance. Next would be the base case that we presented in our water system plan, and it's talked about in the past. That is, proceed promptly with the citing and construction, designing and construction of a centralized treatment plant to serve the community. The third option, and I'll go into why this evolved to another option, is centralized treatment by 2030. We feel that based on the fact that our demands haven't grown substantially, our peak day demands, there's minimal if any risk to push the central treatment plan out farther than a prompt delivery of a major construction capital project. To do this, we would keep the CWA and the groundwater zone separate. In other words, the Squawk Mountain and the valley floor would still be served with groundwater. Cascade Water Alliance would still serve the areas it still serves. We'd have to, because of emerging regulations, put additional treatment in at Well 5, granular activated carbon system for traces of PFOS that have appeared in that water source. We already have granular activated carbon treatment at Well 4, which is, despite an unexpected expense, has been very successful in maintaining non-detectable levels of PFASs in the water coming out of that system. When necessary, we'd shift the Talis neighborhood from groundwater to CWA to make sure we prolong the supply in the valley zone as long as possible. And our revised analysis shows we better have a water treatment plant online, or we would, our target would be to have a water treatment plant online by 2030 because that's the point in time where the valley, the growth in the valley may cause us, based on our projections, to need more water than the wells can deliver. We'd monitor our demands closely with this extension to make sure that our thesis is correct. And then the option, number four option, that turns out to be our recommended option, is to shut down Well 5, which is a well that has the traces of PFAS in it that we don't treat. We would purchase, by that action, we would be entitled to discounted Cascade Water Alliance water based on the surplus they currently have. This option would require us to blend the water in the valley zone with Cascade Water Alliance water. And to do that, we'd implement some chemical feeds for pH adjustment at the Rizden Wells. This would also cause us to fluoridate the entire valley zone and Squawk Mountain zone because of the fact that the Cascade water already has fluoride in it, and we would want to deliver a constant concentration of fluoride throughout our system. Because Cascade option, Cascade is willing to extend this opportunity as late as 2034, by which time they're concerned that they have a lot of concern about the renegotiation of their supply contract with Seattle. Demands in our community and their other member agencies may increase. So that's about as far out as we, as Cascade wants to extend this opportunity. And again, we'd monitor our demands closely to make sure our ongoing assumptions, both conservative and non-conservative, are validated over time. Next slide. Oh, I see a question, so maybe I'll pause here and I can field a question.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for all of this. So as I understand what you're saying, we would be locked into this discounted Cascade Water Alliance water through 2034?
Maybe I'll call on Ed to answer this, but my, it's not, it's any length of time up to 2034. It would be a negotiable and, I believe, rescindable program. Ed, do you want to get on and explain the cascade version of this?
Sure, glad to. Essentially, I think the best approach for both of us, because of concerns about growing demands, et cetera, would be something like every five years, we could do it as a 10-year contract, and at five years, review and agree to an extension and conceivably do that again if circumstances warranted for everyone. So in short, we are flexible, and we'll do what makes sense. We're not trying to force this water on anyone. We're hoping to help solve the problem for you.
Okay, so I'm going to just repeat what I think I heard you say, which is, well, we can sign a contract with rates, there'll be periodic renewals and renegotiations of the rates?
That would be, well, the rates would be set in terms of a level of discount, so that would be protected in the contract for you.
The length of the contract?
Primarily the length of the contract.
Okay, great, thank you.
If conditions change and the quantity needed to change, up or down, we could also work with that.
Okay, super, thank you.
Next, we're going to have Councilmember D. Michelle and then Council President Hunt. But before then, I just want to remind everyone that before speaking, please identify yourselves, and if you're from an outside organization, please identify what organization you're from just so we can keep everybody straight. Thank you for that. Councilmember D. Michelle?
Thank you, and this is Councilmember D. Michelle. So Councilmember Hall and I learned last fall when we were running for the council that fluoridation is a controversial issue among some parts of our residents at least. And so could you just clarify for me, it's my understanding that the fluoridation is already present in the water that's coming from Cascade Water Alliance. Is that correct? And then do we add, when you talk about adding a chemical feed, do we then add more fluoride to stabilize it, or is it just the fluoride that's already present in the Cascade Water Alliance water?
I can take a stab at that. Seattle's supply has been fluoridated as way back, way back into, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just identify yourself before you speak.
Oh, Bob York, Deputy, or excuse me, Interim Public Works Engineering Director. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, the regional supply, not only in Seattle, but the other big sources of water in the Puget Sound region have been fluoridated for many, many years. Issaquah's groundwater has not been fluoridated, so if we were to mix these two waters, the goal of, and just in round numbers, the fluoride level in the regional water is 0.7 milligrams per liter. Our groundwater feeds would adjust the fluoride level in the groundwater to be consistent with what's being, coming into the system from Cascade so that there'd be a uniform concentration of 0.7 milligrams per liter throughout our distribution system. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Does that answer your question? Sorry.
Yes, it does. I'm getting some feedback here, but what other chemicals are we adding in it when we talk about chemical feeds?
The only other chemical that we're proposing to add is pH adjustment. That would be sodium hydroxide, something commonly used throughout the, again, throughout the region. And the reason for that is to raise the pH of the Rizden water so that its corrosivity index is less, and therefore we would not have problems of lead and copper leaching from, at the point of connection to some of our neighborhoods that may still have certain kinds of pipe. You remember the Flint, Michigan issue? This is a very minor version of what we're, why we would add pH or adjust the pH to avoid lead and copper issues in our treated water at the point of the consumer tap.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. I don't see any other questions right now, so Dr. York, if you want to continue on?
Okay, thank you. This might seem like repetition, but here's a, here's the schematic of each of these options. Shutting down the wells and maintaining them maybe as emergency standby because that would mean that all of the water coming down the pipe from Bellevue, from Cascade, is distributed throughout our system. The only exception of that is it's still Cascade water, but in the upper reaches of Bellevue, or excuse me, of Cougar Mountain and South Cove, the water, Cascade water is wheeled through the Bellevue system. This would make us 100% reliant on a pipeline, so although we haven't worked out the details, we would be well-served to make sure that we don't completely lose the opportunity to use our wells, not only in the, in the long term, we'd lose our wells, but they'd be an emergency backup, is what we're proposing. Next slide. This is the implement water treatment, centralized water treatment by 2025. It involves all our supply sources going to a centralized treatment plant at a as-yet undetermined site in the central Issaquah area. The water would be blended and then redistributed throughout our system as a blend to all neighborhoods except for, again, the ones that can't be served because they're so high up on Cougar Mountain, we need the Bellevue system to serve those, deliver water through their system to the higher elevation neighborhoods on Cougar Mountain. Next slide. The next two slides don't show the central treatment plant because it's forecast to be 10 years out, but that's the end goal of every option at some point in the future. So option three is continuing to serve the groundwater zone with the Rizden Wells without any additional adjustments to the Rizden Wells. Again, we'd have to treat both Well 4 and Well 5 at Gilman because of, Well 5 has traces of PFAS, and Well 4 already has treatment. So that keeps the groundwater zone separate from the CWA served zones. One thing to prolong this again is send the Talis neighborhood, which can, is already fluoridated, by the way. Before we, if we're getting ready to run out of water serving Talis, we shut off Talis, send CWA water to Talis, and that would prolong our groundwater zone for a few more years, as it turns out. Option, next slide, please. This is option four, discounted CWA water. We would shut off the Gilman well. We would never relinquish our water rates, and we've talked to various stakeholders to assure ourselves that assure ourselves that our water... Our Gilman supply water rate would never be what they call relinquished by doing some small amount of paperwork. Well 4 would continue to be online. Well 4 has treatment, existing treatment that works pretty well, and we would add chemical feeds to Well 4 and the risen wells, as we previously discussed. And then through existing and improved inner ties with Cascade, we'd serve a blend of water to the various neighborhoods, fully compatible with all water quality requirements. I should note that by shutting down the Gilman Well 5, we sort of take care of the Well 5 not PFAS problem, because we're not delivering that water to the system. And the Gilman wells, very fortuitously, don't have any traces of PFAS ever detected in those two well sources. Next slide, please. So to go to our more detailed analysis, our overarching goal would be to keep the utility rates equal to zero, as a recommendation to council for 2021. Our previous rate study, also done by Sean Cornyn, who's on tonight's call, didn't incorporate the previous costs of the PFAS issue we've had to deal with. So, question?
We have a question from Councilmember Hall on the previous slide.
Okay.
If you could walk one.
Go back one, Joanne, if you want. Go ahead, Councilmember Hall. Bob York speaking.
Yes, thank you very much. This is Councilmember Hall. I had a question about... In these options, when water flow goes to Cougar Mountain and South Cove? So there's always water coming from Bellevue, but I was wondering if you could walk us through why two of the options have water... Additional water flowing to Cougar Mountain, South Cove, while the other two options don't have that?
Okay, here... I probably skipped by that in my... Some of the options that we'd implement over the course of the next couple of years, as we continue to add water mains and do our approved CIP, eventually allow us to serve South Cove with the blend that we're talking about. So I'm going to talk about that in a minute, Councilmember. So if you bear with me, maybe I can answer your question when we go through the pros and cons. I think that's the nature of your question, but I'm not sure.
I'm happy to wait to find out. This is Zach Hall.
Okay, okay. Let me... That's the problem of repetitiveness. You may ask a question that I probably have the answer for coming up. Councilmember Hunt?
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I just... I know that Bellevue is a Cascade Water Alliance member city as well, and so is this also Cascade water that's coming from Bellevue?
It's the same exact water that we get into Issaquah.
Okay.
Yes, it's...
Thank you.
Yeah, it's the same original source and Cascade water, just like we receive in Issaquah.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I try to proceed ahead?
This is Councilmember Goodman. I have a question, follow-up to Council President Hunt. Is that the service to that area, that South Cove area, is that a contract that we inherited, for lack of better word, when we incorporated that area?
Yes. We had two willing agreements, one for the original development of those neighborhoods like Montreux, and then when we took over a water and sewer service in South Cove, we amended our willing agreement with Bellevue to add those... Add that provision of them continuing to serve through their inner ties with Issaquah through that service. And Bellevue, there's a new master meter that actually measures the amount of water that comes from Bellevue to Issaquah at that tie-in. So it was a provision of the assumption agreement between Issaquah and Bellevue that allowed us to serve our South Cove neighbors.
Okay. I don't... Councilmember Goodman here again. I don't know that, unless other people do want to go down this potential rabbit hole, but I've got a number of questions related to that. So, you know, when is the contract up? Is there some opportunity or reason for us to serve directly, to reduce the sources, all that? And maybe you have a quick answer?
Yeah, Bob York here. If you bear with me through the pros and cons of the different options, I will at least partially address that.
Thank you.
Okay. So our goals, again, real quickly. We had the PFAS issue. Our new rate study incorporates that in the various options. We've had additional allocations to pay for different city services from the various utilities. We incorporated that into our updated rate analysis. It turns out one sustainability fund is going away, so that was considered in our updated Our goal is to, as Sean can elaborate, maintain a financially viable utility, meeting all the reserve levels, that service coverage. And while we know it's conservative, we're still using the demand forecast in the 2018 adopted water system plan. But this time, we're considering that that could be conservative. To achieve a zero rate for 2021 and as small an increase as possible for future near-term years, we've done the following. We've... Of course, the water treatment plant's a variable. We have adjusted other CIP projects, one to two years out, because we felt that there would be little detriment to a slight extension of scheduled rehabilitation of some of our infrastructure. But the one thing we've maintained, because we've been working on it six years, is the Spar water transmission main and pump station project that would be a second supply source to the Highlands. Right now, we really only have a single piping system up to the Highlands, and this would provide a lot of resiliency in case there's a seismic event or for any number of other reasons. So we've kept that emerging project that's scheduled for as early as next year inside our CIP. But we've made other changes. Your packet includes the list of changes that we decided were reasonable to implement. Next slide. So I'm going to go quickly through these. The Cascade, 100% Cascade option is the most expensive, both short-term and long-term. So it doesn't take advantage of the short-term discounts available, but even when you consider that, it's an expensive option, and so we didn't pick that one. Option 2, next slide. Option 2 is actually very competitive long-term. It's our previous recommendation, but if we do a significant capital investment along with the Spar project in the near-term, the near-term rates are going to be substantially higher than the options we're going to talk about in a minute. Next slide. So the reason we looked at the Option 3 and Option 4 is we wanted to answer the question, are there options that meet the demand and water quality goals, both short-term and long-term, with lower short-term rates and still competitive long-term rates? And Option 3, next slide. Option 3 would do that. It's a competitive option. We can meet our demand growth over time, and the after 2021, zero rate increase, the projected rate increases over the course of the next few years are in the 7% to 8% range. Still competitive long-term, though, as Sean will show you in a minute. Option... Next slide, please. Option 4 is discounted CWA water. You've heard what that option entails. The water treatment plant's pushed out into the low to early to midnight 2030s. It also has very similar rate increases to Option 3 and very competitive long-term. Next slide, please. There's some other... The reason we picked Option 4 over Option 3 is several different secondary or other considerations. One is we're already making our water supplies between Cascade and the wells compatible for three of the four wells. Will meet our PFAS requirements. Allows the South Cove neighborhood... Oh, here's the one that may partially answer your question. If we do this, and with the next couple of years of water main improvements that we're anticipating, we can serve the South Cove neighborhood with our abundant supply rather than wheel it through Bellevue to South Cove. When I say South Cove, I mean all the other neighborhoods out there, Timberlake Lane, et cetera. That has the advantage, multiple advantages. One is higher pressure. The Bellevue pressure is less than satisfactory to meet some of the buildings out there. Number two, we at least partially can reduce our willing charges for Bellevue to supply water to us. And third, there's some aging infrastructure that serves that neighborhood that not only will we not have to upgrade if we do this approach, but there's some valuable real estate associated with some of that infrastructure that is... Could be an asset that we could consider in our portfolio of things that we can do. Also, while we receive discounted water, we can upgrade the Gilman wellhouse later than we would otherwise need to. And instead of buying full-priced water, we could upgrade the Gilman wellhouse with discounted water. Something that's... Since the Gilman wellhouse was built in the 1980s, it's due for a seismic retrofit and some other improvements. And again, the real benefit here is it pushes the water treatment out sort of past the horizon where it has an impact on our current rates. So it's a good thing to do if you want to make sure our rates stay low in the near-term. Next slide. Okay, now Sean, it's time for Sean Kern to talk about the rate analysis.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, everybody. This is Sean Corn. And I started out with the recently completed rate study that we developed and presented to council middle... Towards the end of last year in September and October.
Sean, can you just identify where you're from, please?
Thank you. I apologize. Yes, I am Sean Corn with HDR Engineering, and I was the project manager for the city's rate study analysis.
Thank you.
So as we started with that rate study, Bob explained some of the different options and the different variations between those options. We've updated and developed each of these analyses based on that revised capital plan with the shift in the capital that he discussed. And then we built into these each of the different operating and capital needs that are necessary to reflect the operation of the system under each of the options. As we went through this, I worked with Ed, as did Bob, at Cascade Water Alliance to develop those purchased water assumptions moving forward for the discounted or the 100% Cascade option. As we went through this, there are a couple key financial areas that I wanted to hit on to talk about how this impacts the overall projection of the customer bills over this next 20-year time period. Next slide, please. So these are the same options Bob described. So we have our four options based on 100% Cascade water, a treatment plant by 2025, treatment plant by 2030, and then the discounted Cascade water option with the treatment plant as late as 2034. On the next slide, I start looking at some of those key financial indicators that we look at as we develop the rate study. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. If you have questions, let me know. This is a summary of the O&amp;M comparison, so the operation and maintenance expenses that are necessary under each of the options. As you look across the bar chart, I want to make it clear that we have 2020 through 2025, and then I skip to 2030, 2035, and 2040 in increments, so we can still read the slides as we look at them here on the screen. So there aren't large jumps in each of those five years, but that's a five-year increment in changes. As you see this, you can see the first bar, the gray bar, the 100% Cascade. You see that rising as we get out to 2035. That's where we transition to the full cost of Cascade Water Alliance, and so you see an uptick there above others. In the prior years, as an example, through 2025, that just reflects the difference in the groundwater costs for the city versus the discounted Cascade water. The other options, Plan 2025, 2030, or discounted water with a plan as late as 2034, you can see are very relative to each other on these scales as we go out over this 20-year time period. On the next slide, then I will talk about the capital. And the only part I wanted to point out on this is the peaks you see with the gray bar and the orange bar. That would be the 2025 treatment plant and the 2030 treatment plant. That three- to four-year period is that funding of the construction of the treatment plant. So you see those peaks as we go through that period. The same peak would occur with the discounted Cascade water, Option 4. It's just off the slide here, but it has the same trend as the gray and orange bars. So once we have the timing of that plant built into each of those, then that drives where we go with those analyses.
And we have a question, if you're done with this slide, when you're done with this slide?
I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Marks?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Councilmember Marks speaking. I have a question about the discounted Cascade Water Alliance option. As the... In the final column, it's different. Herefore, it had been the same capital costs as 100% Cascade Water Alliance and 2025 treatment plant, but all of a sudden in 2030, it's got much higher capital costs compared to those other two options. I understand why the 2030 treatment plant is the highest of them all, because you're building a treatment plant. Why is Option 4 higher cap costs?
Yes, this is Sean Corn with HDR. So I assume you're referencing 2030 there, the blue bar on the far right. That is the first year of expenditures over the three- to four-year period to start funding the improvements needed in construction. And so that first year includes some of the property purchases, as well as some of the initial design of developing the central treatment plant project. So we have that first year that hit. So if you reference the gray bar in 2021, Option 2, the 2025, it's very similar to that, although in 2021, we have some other capital in that year. So it's just the beginning of that process for the plant.
Thank you. That does explain it. Thank you very much.
Great. I don't see any more questions, so you can continue.
So he... So here is the summary of the annual rate adjustments. So the percentages in each of the years that Bob had previously referenced. This is looking short term, as I'll call it, for 2021 through 2025. You can see there's nothing in the 2020 or 2021 column. That means there were no projected rate adjustments for those time periods. And then you can see the adjustments necessary for each of the four options in 2022 through 2025. As was mentioned, as we move to 100% Cascade water or we start funding the treatment plant by 2025, we see those first two bars, the gray bar and the black bar, jumping up higher in those initial years. That's primarily driven by the need to fund O and M on the first option and then to fund the requirements of funding the treatment plant in the treatment plant option for, by 2025. Options three and four stay lower. We don't have those same rate adjustments because we don't need those funding levels at that point in time. So they're able to stay low over this time period. On the next slide, I have a summary of what the overall average rate would be. So this is a summary of the average single family bimonthly bill. It assumes a three-quarter inch meter and six CCF per month. And so you can see in 2020 and 2021, in the data table or in the bars, there are no changes to the overall level of the customer bill. And then as we implement those rate adjustments from the prior slide, you can see the 100% Cascade and the 2025 Treatment Plant option ratcheting up over time. And then you see on the 2030 Treatment Plant, the orange bar, or the discounted CWA in the blue bar, not going up as fast. So we're able to fund our capital needs over this time period with lower rate adjustments as part of this. As we go to the next slide, one of the things I wanted you, you as a council to be able to consider is not only the short term, but also the long-term changes. And so as we look through this, it was mentioned how the different options relate to each other. And as you go down in five-year increments, you can see how the different scenarios change. And what ends up happening in 2040, the second, third, and fourth option, so Treatment Plant by 2025, Treatment Plant by 2030, and Discounted Cascade Water purchases and a Treatment Plant by 2034, all end up at very similar spots. What's interesting is that second option with the early treatment plant, we actually get rates and revenues up to a high enough level by funding that treatment plant early that while it doesn't coast, it doesn't need to increase as much in those out years. And so it becomes a very viable option under that alternative as well. Although, as Bob mentioned, there are other advantages that were associated with that discounted Cascade water option four. So on the next slide, I show you what those different average customer bills look like. Again, a very similar chart where I've got the first five years and then I go to five-year increments. And really, when I put this together, I jumped to the bottom right corner, right? What does 2040 look like under each of these options? And you can see the three final options are very similar within a couple of dollars of each other. And then I went back and looked at what did this hap, what happened over the first five years and, and how does that change? And that's one reason why we looked at option four is it does minimize the rates in the short term. It's still very advantageous in the long term as part of this, and it also provides you with some additional benefits to think about with the South Coast service and a few of the other options. Was there a question on this slide?
Yes, Councilmember Marks, and then I have a question when Councilmember Marks is finished.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Councilmember Marks speaking. I have two questions. The first is, are these numbers corrected for inflation?
Yes, so as we did, this is Sean Korn with HDR. Yes, built into the projections is an inflationary factor. So these do reflect that increase in inflation over time.
And my second question is kind of related, which is oftentimes when you're trying to compare near-term increases in costs with long-term increases in costs, you do a net present value. Have we done, like, for instance, if you had a case, if you, if there was a case where, you know, all of your increases happened in the second half of the next 20 years, then you could say, oh, well, I, if I'd taken my money and I would have gone and invested it in something else for those first, you know, 20 years and there's value, or whatever, 10 years, there's value in that. Do we have the equivalent of a net present value to compare these rather than just aggregate increase?
We did not do a net present value on these. When we were looking at the rate study, we try and include those inflationary impacts both on the operating and capital. But if that's something that's necessary, then I can work with Mr. York to look through that.
I, I don't know if it's necessary, but, but thank you.
Councilmember Goodman here. So maybe it's just because I'm tired, because we had a really late council meeting last night. But, so the current slide, we're on average residential bimonthly bill impacts. Can you explain the difference between this one and two slides back, average single family bill?
Yes, let me look real quickly at what that prior slide was. So the difference, this is Sean Korn with HDR. Oh, thank you. So this, these numbers should be the same for the first five years of that chart. And then on the slide we were just on, two slides back down, then that, this slide through the first six years, 2020 through 2025, is the same as the prior slide. Then I added in 2030, 2035, and 2040 for those next five-year increments to look long term.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman here. Thank you for that. And it also says average residential bimonthly, the title's different as well, so that was a little bit confusing.
I apologize, I understand.
Because, you know, could this average single family, and the second one looks like it includes single family and multifamily, but maybe not. Okay.
It, it is only single family. It's that average residential bill for single family customers.
Okay, thank you. Council President Hunt has a question.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. So this is for a certain size of meter, and I know that the cost varies depending on the meter. So can we, can we extrapolate from this, this that, that similar pattern would follow for all of the other customers at different size meter?
This is Sean with HDR. Yes, that would be a correct assumption. It wouldn't be, it may not be the exact dollar amount or percentage amount, but it would be very close.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Goodman here. I see no questions, Sean, so you may please continue.
Okay, on the next slide. One of the things we wanted to look at also that we've been asked by council to bring forward is what that average bill looks like. So you can see here, the red and blue hashed graph on the left is the discounted Cascade water for 2020 and 2021. Obviously, no change in that bill. That's the $81 approximately. And then we looked at San Amish Plateau, City of Redmond, City of Bellevue, City of Kirkland, and City of Renton. And what's interesting is all of these, yourself included, have what's known as a tiered rate structure. So the more you use, the more you pay at certain set levels. Each of you have different tier sizes or the amount that's included in each of those tiers. And obviously, different pricing is part of that. So, but what's, right now where you're landing is right about, I'd call it in the middle because we've got a couple that are higher, a couple that are lower, and you're almost exactly the same as what Kirkland is right now based on that 12 CCF bimonthly as part of that. And so this just gives you an idea of where you sit today. I always tell folks, this isn't an exact apples-to-apples comparison because each of these utilities may be looking at different needs, different renewal and replacement cycles. But it does give you an idea of what some of your other local entities, Cascade participants, are looking at for their rate, overall customer bills as part of this. And so those prior charts give you an idea of what that overall rate adjustment would look like. And again, these agencies also have rate studies in process or have completed that would be adjusting their rates as well. But overall, it reflects very comparable to all the other agencies.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman here. And Councilmember Marks has a question if you're done with this slide.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Councilmember Marks speaking. My question is, what does Redmond do differently from everybody else? Why do they have so much lower rates than everybody else?
Bob, you want to take a crack at that?
I anticipated this question a little bit and there's, it's two things. One is, and I could have put the diagram up for Redmond, but it's, it's a system that both has groundwater and CWA water. It's a system that has, it's actually the, the CWA supply source can feed the whole town without any pumping, unlike Issaquah. And it's a much fewer pump stations, reservoirs, et cetera, than, than Issaquah. So in part, it's due to the, and then finally, there's an economy of scale in Redmond to some degree that would influence the, the rate, the rates they charge. But that's the short version. There's probably other aspects of, of what Redmond does that are also important. But that's, that's what I was able to glean from looking at their, their, talking to them and looking at their analysis, their water system plan.
So I was just saying, that's a somewhat confusing answer to me because it looks like if we went pure CWA, that'd be our most expensive option. So it makes me feel like Redmond is a better deal than we do. And I, and I say that, I think ever since that's been right. But that's just my initial reaction to that answer. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Goodman here. I don't see any other questions, so Sean, you may continue.
Okay, and I think on the next slide, I turn it back over to Bob to conclude the summary of the presentation.
Thank you, Sean. Next page, next slide, please. Oh, no, that's yours, Sean.
Sorry, I apologize. This is Sean again. So just to summarize, all of these options do reflect viable water supply alternative and approaches for the council to consider. It does include the council master plan component. Oh, did we lose the presentation? Thank you. It does include the water master plan results and recommendations. So we are looking at those demands. As was mentioned, the last couple of years have been lower demands. We've built the model, the cost to reflect what those projected demands are as part of this and evaluated that as we went through that with the different options. Option four, the Cascade discounted water approach does minimize the financial impact to customers. It also minimizes the demand risk in the sense that you would pay for your typical or normal Cascade water purchases to serve all of your areas. And then the difference from well five being shut down would be at that discounted rate that you could take advantage of as part of that. And so that gives us a little additional security with shutting down well five and maintaining that sufficient supply for the demands that may happen on the system and specifically in the Valley floor. And then finally, this really gives you that stepping stone to move forward with that rate and capital funding plan for the water utility into the future based on the direction that you all provide us. And now I believe I can turn it over to Mr. York to complete this.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman here. Before we turn it over to Director York, I understand that Ed from Cascade Water has some additional information in response to Councilmember Marks' question about Redmond's.
Yes, thank you. Before joining Cascade, I was their rate consultant for a couple of decades. One reason their rates are lower is Redmond was a very early adopter of capital replacement funding, building into their annual budget depreciation funding and moving that into construction. As a result, they have a very low debt profile. But probably, Bob mentioned a couple of really good points, a simpler system and some economies of scale. The other major difference, though, is Redmond actually operates two water enterprises. One is their original system, the other is the Novelty Hill development. If you looked at your parallel, if the Highlands were kept separate and, and charged differentially, that would be somewhat equivalent. So they actually have another rate for, for their Novelty Hill development that's quite a bit higher than the base rate that they apply for their prior retail system. So they've separated costs and that's kept the cost lower in the original service area.
Councilmember Goodman here. Councilmember Marks, does that answer your question?
Thank you, it does.
Great, okay. Now we're turning it over to Director York.
Thank you, and thank you, Ed, for a value-added answer to a question that didn't directly involve Cascade. Bob York here, Niteram Public Works Engineering Director. Let me finalize this by reiterating our, our recommended option. It's shutting down well five, purchasing discounted CWA water to replace that lost capacity, adding some chemical feeds to make sure our water is compatible with CWA or groundwater and make sure that any fluoride concentrations is the same throughout our, our entire system. The water treatment plant could be pushed out. We're anticipating to the mid, early to mid 1930s, although as Sean pointed out, our investment would begin somewhat before that. And our results are a zero rate increase for 2021, comparable rate increases in the ensuing years and, and long-term rates that are very similar to the other options that make sense. So, next slide. So we're asking for feedback so that we can take the next steps, which includes proceeding soon to meet the emerging PFAS regulations that are, although the COVID's delayed those regulations, they look like they're going to be implemented in the next, mid to late next year. We want to proceed with the modest improvements necessary to allow this, facilitate the preferred option to occur, which means we need to start designing in the next month or two. Next slide. So if option four, or frankly, whatever option is selected, we take the next steps. Council action would be required to finalize the rate study, not only for water, but also sewer and stormwater, where we've also done an analysis to try to keep rates or, and our recommendation is keep rates at zero for 2021 on the other utilities. We come back to council to authorize funding for the short-term water improvements that are needed to implement option four. And another action item would be to finalize our agreement with Cascade Water Alliance to, to allow the short-term water option to, to proceed contractually. If there's another slide, please go to it. So that summarizes our presentation tonight. Thank you, and we look for any feedback, questions, and, and recommendations from, from council.
Councilmember Goodman here. We have a couple of questions. First is Councilmember Marks and then Councilmember Hall. Before we go to the questions, I just wanted to clarify one thing. The next steps on option four, just to make it clear for later viewers who might be watching this and also for all of us here, is that it's direction on which option. We're not actually authorizing anything tonight. It just gives, it would just gives the administration the feedback that they need to go forth and take the next steps. They need to take the next steps. It just gives, it would just gives the administration the feedback that they need to go forth and take the next steps they need to take. Now we will go to Councilmember Mart.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Councilmember Mart speaking. So I want to make sure I understood something that I heard earlier. And it has to do with our uh response, our potential response down the road to changes in pricing at Cascade Water Alliance. Did I hear that one of the options that we would have would be like a 10-year contract with maybe a five-year runway? So you you do it like a 10-year contract and after five years, you evaluate where you're at and maybe do another five years and then do another five years and and so you keep, potentially keep like a five-year runway uh in response to changing rates. Is that, did I understand that correctly or not correctly? Thank you.
Yes, this is Ed Seabrand, Cascade. Uh, I think that's exactly what works best for mo- both agencies, so I think that's what we would work towards. Uh, the length of the runway is really related to the time you need to implement and execute your project. So five years seems to make sense. So something like 2025 would be the first window. We could extend five years. And if we're successful on other fronts and extending our Seattle supply contract, we may have ability to extend further than that, which may benefit you as well.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Um, a quick comment and then a couple of questions. Um, I guess just um first to say I'm largely supportive of um how option four has been presented to us. And thank you very much for all the really detailed information. I appreciate it. I had a couple of questions. What were they? One of them was uh, you know, option four allows us to delay you know, building this new water treatment plant. And I see obvious, um, you know, near-term uh capital benefits to that. But are there other benefits to waiting um on a water treatment plant in terms of technology and improvements in technology around um chemicals or anything like that? Or is water treatment pretty much as good as it's going to get?
Bob York, Public Works Interim Director. Having been in the treatment business since the 1970s, there's always an opportunity for better technologies to come around. We're confident that even with existing technology, we can meet the water treatment requirements, but there's innovation occurring all the time. So waiting allows more opportunity for innovative and maybe cost competitive or cost-reusing solutions to occur. So that's a good that's another advantage of some of the extensions of building water treatment out to the out years. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, and uh, Councilmember Goodman, if I may, I just have one.
Yes, sure, go ahead.
Thank you very much. This is Zach Hall again. Um, my other question was when we were talking about South Cove earlier, you mentioned something about uh infrastructure. Allows infrastructure shutdown or and that, you know, South Cove has very aged water mains and infrastructure in the neighborhood, but there's a lot of work going on right now as we speak. So I was just one, I was hoping you could speak to what you meant by that because I thought a lot of the lines were being replaced right now.
There's a lot of activity in South Cove related to water and sewer and even other projects. The um infrastructure we inherited from Bellevue includes a um a reservoir, an aging reservoir built around 1980 on the hillside near the Montreux entrance. That reservoir hasn't been rehabilitated since it was built. So uh if we connect the South Cove community through we'll emphasis for through infrastructure to the Valley floor zone, another reservoir, the West Side Reservoir can serve the uh various storage needs of the South Cove neighborhood, allowing a reservoir that has many uh operational problems and and uh potential structural upgrades to be uh taken out of service. I won't go into the numerous details of operational challenges we face with that reservoir, but it's on a dead end, so water quality is always a consideration. Secondly, that parcel that that sits on is a multi-acre view parcel, so there's an intrinsic value uh associated with that site that may or may not be of the future interest. So that's the uh, that's what I was alluding to with the uh opportunity there. Uh, not only a cost avoidance upgrade of reservoir that's uh really passed its useful life, but also the intrinsic land value that now is owned by the City of Issaquah. There's all of this transaction.
Councilmember Hall, anything else?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Goodman. This is Zach Hall. Just to ask real quick is um and thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize the reservoir pit played into that picture, but would the potential utilization of that opportunity only exist in option four? And then I'll, and then I'll be done, Councilmember Goodman.
Bob York here. Um it exists in option two as well. Anything, anything that allows the blending of water and it's and in 2023, the extension of our system out to the uh South Cove neighborhood would have the same benefit in regards to that reservoir. So um in the case of the water treatment plant option, of course, it wouldn't be online until 2025 based on our revised forecast for how long it might take to acquire the land and build the water treatment plant. But essentially, at at some point, the same opportunity exists. The question then is how long do we, can we wait before we have to upgrade a reservoir? A rough estimate of that upgrade could be approaching a million dollars. So it's a big res- by Issaquah standards, it's a big reservoir. So, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman here. Next, we have Councilmember Ray. He has a question.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Um, first, I just wanted to say thank you to Bob York and um and and the team for doing this analysis. Um, we asked last year that you go back and um be creative and and I think you did. I have to tell you, I really like option number four and and Councilmember Mart talked about the discounting and you know, net present value. And so if you look at the real value to the citizens of of deferring the water treatment plant um until the out years, it's actually fairly significant. And uh you know, we go all the way out to 2035 and the rates are about the same, but it allows us some many years here of being able to to stage in the uh increases in rates, and I think that has um some benefit. I guess the one thing I wanted to ask you to look at is um could we escalate the rates a little faster than what would be necessary so that we can flatten that curve, uh build up some reserves during the the early years um of option four? Um, I'm not sure that that's what we want to do, but I just want you to look at it and see what that would look like. And instead of having a sort of a um uh an upswing in the curve at the end, it more of a flatter curve on those rates for option four.
Sean uh probably has the answer because we anticipated that question.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Sean Corn with HDR. Uh, yeah, when you look at the long-term rate adjustment plan or transition plan, we we kind of build up and then we drop down and then we build up again. And so absolutely, we could increase that midpoint period there, right, you know, around 2020 25, 26, and 27, we could bump those up a a little bit. They're relatively nominal. They're four percentage, I think, in those years. And so we could bump those up and then try and bite that down uh in those out years. So that's definitely something we could look at as part of the process.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have a question from Council President Hunt. And then will be Councilmembers De Michelle, followed by Councilmember Mart.
Um, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Um I I wanted to briefly summarize one uh comment that we received from a member of the public um who who wrote to city council about this item. Um, so this member of the public wrote to us that um the information was presented really nicely. Um, and that also had a number of questions, which I believe we covered, um including about the growth rate that was used to um ascertain the demand and also the water from Bellevue. The water that's being wheeled in from Bellevue and about the um varying regional rates, which we we discussed earlier. So that's, that was the one email that we received on this topic. Then my comments on this are, um firstly, I am at this time supportive of option four. I think it's really important right now with all of the um devastating economic effects of COVID-19 that we try to keep our rates down in the near term, um especially because uh that's really important for folks um to not have a big rate increase right right now. Uh, I also um think that the other options that were presented were compelling, the other uh reasons for that option four were compelling. And I appreciate like Councilmember Ray said, I appreciate that um you came back to us with these options. They are different than what we've seen before. And I appreciate going back to the drawing board and and thinking through some more options. One note, um, I think for for messaging when we have something like chemical feeds, I think it's important that we um be clear about what we mean. We talked about how um in response to Councilmember De Michelle's question, we talked about how that meant things like um adjusting the pH, but uh it's it's important, I think, to to be clear about what that means um in the future. Uh, and then um I also every time we talk about water rates, I I want to um mention that we do have an affordable program for seniors for water discounts. When I was on the Cascade Water Alliance, there was a affordability study that was commissioned for member cities and it was found that our city had a very low rate of um use of that program. And so to the extent that, so we've since tried to promote it and um we do have that program. And um there's information about that on the city's website. Thanks.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Uh, thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle, and I will be very brief because uh I uh agree with all that's been said before. And so I don't know that there's any need to repeat it. I think there is much to commend option number four. I will say again, uh, and agree with Council President Hunt that when we're, uh, there is a segment of uh people in Issaquah who are concerned about what goes into the water. And so I think uh we need to be very clear and transparent about that and message that well so that we don't have misinformation floating around out out there. Um, and maybe we could address that more appropriately when it comes back to the council for for adoption, for formal adoption. But at this point, um, I support moving forward with uh option number four. So thank you very much. And also, uh, I will agree with everyone that the materials were very well prepared and presented. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Councilmember Mart speaking. I want to plus one how clear the information was today. It feels like the last time we did this, you spent like, I don't know, six hours, eight hours, something like that. Uh, getting back to basics on uh water and how we do water. Uh, you know, I showed up uh this evening probably feeling a little pugnacious and I can't, I'm kind of classic and was going to argue for option two, just on the control your destiny sort of thing, having seen cities that have had water problems. But um I now find myself in support of option four. And it's really about that runway that we discussed. It's really about the ability, a five-year time horizon is long enough time that you can react to changes in the market. I compare that to our King County Waste System, which it's more like a 22 question mark year effort to try to change how you do waste. But a five-year time horizon is short enough that that we can react and if there are changes in the marketplace and changes in water demand in King County that makes this option harder for us, uh, we can go build something. So uh, having gotten that information, I'm now supportive of the administration recommendation uh as we move forward. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. I think everybody's had an opportunity. Please raise your hand if you haven't. I don't have anything uh new or different or more interesting to say. I agree with my almost all the comments that um fellow council members have made and having um as has Councilmember Mart's and I have sat through many of these, um, I agree. I'm a much um appreciative for um what I consider to be a very um well-done, clear, straightforward um presentation. Uh, Director York and um City Administrator Bob Quip, do you have what you need from the council on this matter?
I'm waiting for all of you.
Yeah, Council, Councilmember Goodman, members of the council, good evening. Um, I think we're fine. Uh, we will come back at uh future meetings as was described with various uh actions to implement uh moving forward. Uh, I want to thank uh Bob uh for his diligent work on this. Coming in after uh many years of Sheldon Lynn being our our director to giving a fresh look to this uh with the direction to uh, you know, see what else we can do. So Bob, thank you very much. And Andrew Schneider, the Deputy City Administrator, thank you as well uh for uh your leadership in getting through this. So thank you, Councilmember Goodman. We're, we're set to go.
Great. And thank you to uh to our guests for showing up today. We really appreciate it. Sean and who else is out there? Anybody else? Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. ID 0702, city assessment, development department, cost recovery, and presented by Andrea Snyder, our Deputy City Administrator, and I believe also Jean Paul, our management analyst. Welcome.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Goodman. Good evening, members of city council and members of the public who are viewing from home. I am the Deputy City Administrator, Andrea Snyder, and um, we're going to be talking about the citywide services assessment and providing you an update to that work. I will be providing the first part of the presentation and then I'll turn it over to the city's management analyst, Jean Paul, for the second part of the presentation, which is that cost recovery study. Keith Niven, who is the city's Development Services Director, is also on hand to answer any questions that we have. Next slide, please. The purpose of the presentation um and discussion tonight is really, like I said, to provide that update on the citywide services assessment work that we've been doing, particular with, particularly with developments, with the Development Services Department or DSD. We're going to talk about those department improvements that we've been working on and that we've identified and that cost recovery study. And that study was to determine really how well our permitting costs and other developments-related revenues specific to DSD really cover the costs of providing those services. And then um also, we wish to receive city council feedback and direction on the department staffing item that I'll bring up a little bit later in the presentation, as well as the cost recovery target that council has set previously and determining whether council wants to revisit that target. Next slide, please. Great. So um the 2020 adopted budget uh included $250,000 for the citywide services assessment. We started to begin uh some of that work and setting the stage for it. And then um post COVID-19 and after that hit, we brought most of that work in-house and that work is being performed by staff. That's where Jean uh comes in a little bit later. And um we wanted to do two things as it relates to development services. Address the dissatisfaction with service. We'd heard input uh from the community and others including staff, that they were not happy with the way that things were going. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, and then also to examine again, how well are our revenues that we take in through permitting fees? How well are they recovering those costs? And before we transition to the next slide um and talk about DSD improvements, about DSD improvements, I wanted to just pause and say that the city of Issaquah is really committed to continuous improvement. And as such, we're always looking for ways to improve, and we're always looking for feedback on how we can improve. And so the next couple of slides, where we talk about some of the themes and problems that we've identified and the needs that we've identified, those things are really not meant to be exhaustive, but rather a place to start, and a place to start making progress. So with that said, next slide, please. So as I said before, we took a look at some of the feedback that we've been hearing from the community, some feedback from city council members, applicants, and customers, and employees. And we had a few pretty difficult discussions, lots of very detailed discussions about what's not working, what needs to improve, and several themes emerged. And so rather than get into the details this evening, I'd really like to stick to some of the themes of things that we heard and address those. So the first thing that we heard, first theme is that there's not a clear understanding of who the customer is, and especially when the desires of the community and the desires of the developer or the permit applicant conflict, as they sometimes do. And so there's confusion about which of those needs and needs should be prioritized, and that's one of the problems that we identified. Second, we identified the need for the clarification of the city code. Now, many of the council members are familiar with the work on Title 18 and a few of our other chapters. We're hoping that the clarification and simplification of city code would provide for faster and more consistent interpretation by staff, so that we meet the community's goals. The code is there so that we can meet communities' goals and implement those goals, and when that is not clear, it makes it very difficult to do that. Also, a clear and simple city code provides better communication to the public and better predictability to them of what they can expect as they apply for permits, or as their neighbors apply for Third, we need to create, or in other cases, improve processes and standardize them to enhance predictability and consistency for the public while also increasing the efficiency of staff. The fourth theme is improvements to department culture, and in order to improve staff morale. And Development Services is the department that has, in recent years, experienced a lot of turnover, and you can probably conclude that part of the department culture problems are really influenced by the other themes that we've already discussed. It's hard to have a healthy, strong department culture and strong morale when some of these other things are lacking. But there's a few other things we need to specifically address in employee morale here as well. And then five, changes to the organizational chart and position were something that came up as a need to ensure the right people were in the right position, and also increase some of the in-house capacity. Next slide, please. So some of the first efforts coming out of these themes, improvements that we can make that would help address these needs, first is to change the name to Community Planning and Development instead of Development Services Department. And this name change really puts the community first, where it belongs. And it also helps to clarify for staff and anybody else that the community is to come first, over any individual applicant. The name change will be implemented following the study session. For the purpose of clarity, tonight, we wanted to keep with the old nomenclature and use DSD, but moving forward, we'd like the name to be changed. We also are working, we will be working to revise the mission statement for the department. Each department has its own mission statement in addition to the city's mission statement. And again, the goal of that is to further clarify the services and the priorities of serving the community first. That has yet to be done.
Can I ask a question? Councilmember Goodman here. So the change, the name change to Community Planning and Development, would the Parks Department still do its own planning? So can you speak to that a little bit? Because if I'm a non-council member who doesn't, you know, probably know as much about the city structure as a council member or city employee would, I might think that Community Planning and Development also heads up Parks Planning.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Andrea Snyder again. Thank you for that question. The planning function that occurs for Parks is very specific to parks and creating those plans. The community planning function of Development Services, or the new department that will be named, is still looking at the comprehensive plan, or these long-range plans that are a bit more overarching, and would not be taking on the entirety of the planning functions that occur across the city.
Okay.
So that planning function for parks, specifically for parks, would stay within the Parks Department.
Okay. I think it might get a little bit confusing, but we'll see. All right. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. So the second improvement that I'd like to talk about tonight is updating the land use code, building codes, and codes for enforcement. This work was underway. Some of it, we started last year, but this work is underway, and those updates have been stalled and delayed due to COVID-19. Third, process improvement. So in addition to the codes themselves, the processes that we have need to be improved. And I'd just like to highlight just a couple as examples for you this evening. The first is incomplete permit applications. So work is underway to stop accepting incomplete permit applications, and to develop criteria to help determine what is sufficient for a complete application. Now, from a common sense perspective, you might think, why do we, why would we accept incomplete permit applications? That doesn't seem to make any sense on the face of it. And part of it is in order to try to serve this customer who's got a permit. Maybe they don't have everything that they need, but they're really looking for staff feedback, or they're looking for some interpretations of what they're trying to do, and we're trying to meet those customer needs. Well, the problem is that if we don't have all the information that we need to really provide that feedback to the applicant, then the process becomes longer, it becomes less predictable for the applicant, and it becomes much more iterative, as the more staff learn and the more information they get on a certain project from the applicant. That changes the context of their interpretation of what they see. It might include other codes that need to be applied, et cetera. So accepting incomplete applications from a desire to be really responsive is actually making things much less predictable, and has been much more frustrating for our customers in most cases. So we also need to determine, and this is something we're working on right now, what are the criteria to determine whether an application is sufficient? What is that information that we need to be able to provide responses to our permit applicants that are Another process improvement is really looking at maximizing the customer and staff time by reducing drop-ins and encouraging applicants to schedule appointments. So we have, we have very much an open-door policy, which is great. We always want to, like I said, be responsive to our customers and our applicants, but sometimes people walk in wanting answers to questions that are a little complicated and need a little bit more research, and we need a little bit more time to make sure that we're giving them all the information that they're looking for. And so the city's currently testing software for this purpose, so that customers or members of the public can schedule an appointment and very easily and quickly, and be able to set aside the time so that they can get their questions answered. This, the software will also help enhance services for the public during the So those are just a couple of examples of process improvement. There are others that we've identified through this process that need to be improved, but I just wanted to give you some examples of what we're looking at. So fourth, improving the department culture, and this is something that is very important, and we have not made as much progress on that as some of the other items on this list. We had started to, we had scheduled monthly meetings with staff to really discover from them, what are these things that we need to be doing to improve department culture, and to get their ideas. And once again, COVID-19 hit, and that really put a halt on those discussions as other priorities rose to the surface. So that's something that, we are ready to pick up that work again, and we'll be getting again soon. And then number five, we wanted to examine the current authorized positions in relation to the current needs. And that's to really better ensure, again, that the right people are in the right position, and so this is one of the first things that we wanted to take a look at. So when the layoffs were required due to reduced revenues resulting from the pandemic, the administration prioritized planners and other technical staff over managers. So as a result, three managers in the department were laid off, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that organizational chart to address this issue of aligning the positions with the current needs. I thought I'd pause there and make sure there aren't any questions.
Councilmember Goodman here. I'm not seeing any questions, but you can continue.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. So like I said, this list of improvements is not meant to be exhausted. We are committed to continuous improvement, but this is, again, just a starting place for us. So if we could proceed to the next slide, please? Thank you. So here's a piece of the new org chart. The full chart is in the packet on page 82, but it was a little bit too much information to put on this slide. So we'll just talk about the divisions that we would have with the new organization. So again, this chart reflects four of, well, it reflects the layoffs that occurred in May, including the permit center manager, the long-range planning manager, and the project manager. And we believe these layoffs served to better align the department functions with the current needs. And also, we brought in some additional administrative staff into DSD from the former centralized support services office, with, that resulted in the loss of the support services manager position. So this org chart does reflect the layoffs that occurred. Previously, divisions within DSD consisted of the permit center, current land use planning, which also included engineering, building, and long-range planning. And the divisions of the department now are, as you can see, administrative services, again, because we brought in that additional administrative services function, when that function decentralized across the organization, building, which now includes the permit center, planning, which is that current land use or current planning function, and from that, we have separated out engineering. And these divisions that you see here on this slide, I think, better segment departments' operations by function, and are certainly more reflective of what's seen in many other cities. And I'd like to talk specifically about engineering a little bit more. Making engineering its own division really reduces the direct reports to the planning manager and allows her more time to focus on current planning needs, which include that permitting function. The new, we are asking for council feedback on a new engineering manager position this evening, and we believe the engineering manager position would strengthen the engineering team within this department and provide enhanced technical capacity and oversight as more engineering services are brought in-house. And council may recall that earlier this year, we had talked about the engineering consultant services that the city uses, RH2, and we have reduced their contracts to bring more of those engineering services in-house in order to save money. And we think that we can provide those services well, and also save money for the general public. So bringing an engineering manager on at a time that we're bringing in additional engineering resources in-house versus consulting out would, again, help strengthen that technical capacity and oversight within this department. So this org chart, as you see it here, and in its more complete form on page 82 of your packet, is, was used to guide the future-looking portions of the cost recovery study, which Jean Paul is going to get into and provide more information on in a little bit. But at this point, if we could have the next slide, please, I'd like to pause for questions and feedback, and specifically looking for feedback on the engineering manager position.
Any comments or feedback? I guess, I guess, I don't know how you take silence. Oh, President, Council President Hunt. And then Councilmember D. Michelle. Oh, now they're just flooding the chat box. No, Council President Hunt.
Thank you. So this is Council President Hunt. I am having trouble giving you feedback. I did review the materials. I guess I would like more information about, about why this was decided to be the position that was added. And you mentioned that this is a similar structure that other cities use, but I guess, in addition to that, I'm sure there are reasons why other cities and our city have decided to reorganize in this way. And so I guess my comment is, I'm having a little bit of trouble formulating without more understanding of the reasons why this is the position that's necessary, especially, especially given our current circumstances with the revenue reductions that you mentioned.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Andrea Snyder again. I, there's a couple of reasons, and I think I probably touched over them maybe a little bit too briefly in my materials and presentation. But one is that the current land use planning manager has frankly too many direct reports for her to be able to really supervise and provide that oversight well. She also, and is a planner by trade, and that's really what the position of a current planning manager is, and therefore she's not, no fault of her own, she has the qualifications to do that position, but she's not a trained engineer. And in order to provide that oversight, staff have in the past been consulting with Public Works Engineering to be able to weigh in more on an engineering and technical, technical advice. And that was difficult for both departments, and we, the, it's, from talking to staff and understanding how the processes have been working, I believe we really need to deepen our engineering bench, especially as we bring in more of those outside services to be inside. And so having a manager that can oversee that and provide that technical advice, and be able to provide some of that technical decision-making based off of engineering principles and not planning principles or design principles, is something that we are lacking in this city. So those are, those are really the main reasons. I hope that answers your question.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it provides more information, so thank you.
That was a soft yes. Okay, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Zach Hall. My question was pretty much the same. And honestly, I wish maybe I'd emailed this beforehand. I did read the materials, but as a newer council member, I'm struggling to kind of understand what the difference is between all these departments and what all the managers do within Development Services. within development services, between engineering, planning, and building. You know, coming in as a former community member, now council member, those all sound the same to me. So maybe just, we can either connect offline if that makes more sense or if you think it's kind of shorter and you can go through that now and that makes sense, that would be great. Otherwise, I do want to get to supporting it if, you know, other cities are adopting this kind of structure and if administration really believes that this would help free up in the planning department. But I, again, I just need to know a little bit more about what each service does.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I'd be happy to address that in a high level on this, on this meeting. And then if we need to follow up, I'd be happy to do so. This is Andrea Snyder again. So, so we talked about the land use and current planning. So they are, that person is looking at how does those land use policies, and I'm going to go with the most common one of zoning. So if there's a permit application that comes in and somebody wants to build, let's say, multifamily within a certain area, we need to assess whether or not that's even allowed by the city zoning. And are those land uses in the land use policy, is that in alignment with what that applicant wants to do? There's also design guidelines that the planning and current planning team would apply to the project. So there's use, there's design, those types of things would be within land use. Engineering would be very different. It would be how, how does this project fit within perhaps a critical area such as a sloped environment? How does the project fit within a transportation context and the roadways? And so those are applying different standards to our engineering standards, which are different than the use or the design. Much more specific in, in terms of what would be feasible from an engineering standpoint or what would work within the, the physical environment there. Does that, does that begin to start to help? Building would be a little bit different in that building would be looking at the actual structure that's taking place. So does the actual structure, is it safe? Does it comply with the building code, which is really, again, focused on the safety and the structural integrity of the building? Which is different from how we use the building or what the building looks like, that's land use. So that's, that's a very high-level summary. I hope that helps.
Councilmember Hall? Anything else?
Zach Hall here. Yeah, just to say, yeah, that does help. I mean, to me, that reads like start to finish from beginning of a project, conception, land use, all the way to what does the building look like? Separating it out by thinking of the narrative, I think, would get me to the point where this makes sense, this kind of model makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember DeMichele.
Oh, thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. And like Councilmember Hall, I'm feeling a little bit like an outsider of coming in here. But I, so just some general observations and maybe a question about how we can realistically look at the, at this group. I moved here 35 years ago and I think for the last 35 years, I have heard people complaining about the planning development department and how hard it is to get things done and how long it takes. And that would be through five different administrations and many different directors for that, that group. And I also worked at King County. And when I worked there, I would hear stories all the time about how slow it was to get permits and how hard it was to get through the planning department at King County. And then my, my dear sister worked in the planning department in Spokane for 20, 25 years. And I heard many stories, again, about it was so difficult. So I am wondering if realistically, what is our, what is, what is it we are trying to achieve here? Are we trying to achieve a no-conflict zone where everybody is very happy when they leave? Which is great. I love customer service. And I think some of the proposed changes are excellent. But it does feel as though the planning and development departments in cities are always sort of a point of contention for the public and for developers. And so I just want to be realistic with seeing people who are working in that department in terms of what is our, what exactly are we trying to achieve in terms of our out-facing to the public? And then again, in-facing toward the council and the, and the leadership of the city in terms of perhaps communications and things? Just what is our end goal here? And how realistic is it when apparently conflict is sort of built into the planning or development departments in cities? Well, that's my, those are my general observations because I don't feel like I've been an insider long, long enough to really, to know the, the two sides of every story that you really need to hear about specific situations. So.
Well, respectfully, Councilmember DeMichele, I don't think it's, I think you hit the nail on the head. I don't think you're so much of an outsider here. The, I think you have great observations in that the, the planning department in any city or county or jurisdiction, they are the regulators. And that means that sometimes you have to tell people no or you have to stay within certain regulations. And that's, that's difficult. So the goal is not for 100% customer satisfaction. I think that would be, that would be an unrealistic goal to meet. Instead, though, I think we can do better in terms of predictability. I think we can do better in terms of consistency applied across projects. And we're also looking to make sure that the community is, is, as a whole, is saying that yes, the development that is occurring within our city is the development that we want to see. And it's, it's in accordance to the vision that we've set forth and to the policies that, you know, we have been commenting on and been approving. And in many places, there's some, there's some conflict and discord with that. And I, I think that we can do better. I know that the department and talking with staff and leadership of, of that department agree. So I think we are looking to improve those outcomes. That's the goal.
And Councilmember Goodman, if I can jump in and just amplify on the issue of consistency. In all the communities I have worked in, not unlike Councilmember DeMichele's observation, there's always frustration on some level because of the issue being a regulator. Different people have different visions of what the community should be. But at the end of the day, we need to be consistent. And we need to have senior managers who have the skills and the time to be consistent. And I think in my observation and working with DSD here in Isqwa, that's been a problem, is that you have not had managers who have been in the right seats sometimes and you've not had them have the time that they need to do the work that they need to do and provide that consistency. So part of this rework with the reorganization is to provide the time to make sure that those managers will hopefully have the skills and abilities that are needed at the time.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember DeMichele?
That comment is very appreciated. And that helps me a lot to understand where we're trying to get to. So yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Good. Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Councilmember Marks speaking. Deputy City Administrator Snyder, help me understand the engineering function. If we look citywide at what engineering is done at the city, how does creating this new division, where does that engineering work and function come from? And sort of how does it, how does this snapshot change how engineering is done by the city in total?
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. This is Andrea Snyder. So, so I think perhaps we can best talk about it through an example of a project. We, as, as council knows, we have a Public Works Engineering Department. And that's for our, our civil engineering projects or capital improvement projects related to transportation and utilities. Within the Development Services Department, we have an engineering function that focuses on the engineering aspects of a privately-run development project. So if we have a development that goes in that that development needs to, for example, install a pump station. That is something that's paid for by the private development. Our engineering function within Development Services would review, while consulting others, but would review, does this pump station meet the needs of that, that are according to our engineering standards? How does this fit within our other infrastructure? And they would help coordinate those conversations and consult with other aspects. The engineering function within this department would also be looking at, let's talk about sidewalks. So if new sidewalks need to put in, to be put in on Newport, for example, that previously did not exist, how do those sidewalks meet with the city standards? For what sidewalks should look like? How do they meet within ADA regulations for the slope of that sidewalk? Because this is new sidewalks, so we have to make sure that it's meeting all of those standards. So that's what the, the engineering function would be reviewing is aspects of those projects that are really not related to publicly-led civic infrastructure so much as utilities and transportation. That's what occurs within Public Works Engineering. So that's, that's really the current situation. What we're talking about by bringing RH2 services in-house, those RH2 services are currently managed by the department, by the Development Services Department. And it would keep that function within this department, but really bring the talent in-house. And so we would have more staff on hand with the technical capabilities to review those projects and the engineering component of those projects. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Marks?
Sorry, I muted myself, to be polite, that I couldn't mute. Ah, yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman here. Seeing no other questions, I think we can move on. Or comments?
Councilmember Goodman, if I may, this is Andrea again. Really, what I'm hoping for feedback is an understanding from council as far as our next steps. So our next step for this process is to kind of continue marching along with the themes that we've uncovered and the improvements that we've discussed and that were included with your memo. And also to really look at that engineering manager position. And we'd like to come back to council seeking approval and authorization for that position. And we would need council's authorization for it because it's a new position for us. So that's something that, that I'm hoping to get some feedback on. Jean-Paul is, and I've heard from some of you and I appreciate that. Thank you. More information will come, I believe, with Jean-Paul's presentation on the cost recovery study as, again, his future-looking portions of his study included that position, just to see what it would look like. So council would have a better financial understanding and picture if we were to hire and, and fill that position.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman here. So you're specifically, so this is the time that you're looking for specific feedback on the administration's intent, unless you hear, otherwise, to bring forward a new position, engineering manager in Development Services Department, which is going to be renamed. So now is the time to, if there is specific feedback or other than what you've already heard or probably more specifically would be specific concerns, you would want to hear about that now.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. That's correct.
Great. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I, I, if I look at the org chart, the complete org chart, I can see that there are, I think around nine direct reports that would report to that manager. And then there are other similar numbers of direct reports to the other managers. So from a, from a sheer, you know, this many people to this manager perspective, I think that that makes sense. But I guess my ask of the administration for when we have to formally decide on this, I would like information about how this organization of, of individuals within the department, which now has the engineering as a separate group that would need its own manager, how that organization benefits the, the community in terms of the customer experience and also the community experience when they're interacting with the department? And then also the experience of individuals within the department, the city employees? So I just need a clear understanding of the benefits of creating that new position from that organizational perspective. And you did provide more information. I appreciate that. But just a very clear understanding would be good for that final decision. Thanks.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Just very briefly, I like the idea of moving ahead with, with bringing forth that position. So I would, I would look forward to having that brought forward.
Anybody else? I'm waiting to be last. Councilmember Goodman here. So I, I guess the only thing that I'm not clear about, if I go back to the nine or so years, nine and a half, is that, and I, I'm speaking very generally, so this may not be perfectly accurate. It seems like we've gone in-house to a lot of not-in-house and now we're bringing some of that back in-house. And I think I recall very generally, and maybe Councilmember Marks can correct me, at the time we've been on, we're on land and shore together over the years, that part of the rationale is efficiency for both, you know, whichever way. Efficiency, cost savings, you know, if you do contracts and you're not paying employees, if you have employees and you're not paying contracts. So I'm a little clear on how, in addition to the other questions about how this benefits the public, maybe it fits under that list of how this benefits the public. I think I'd like to be a little bit more comfortable that we're not just, you know, we just keep flipping back and forth trying to find the perfect formula. Other than that, I like that this is a, from what I'm hearing, it was an eternal department-driven process and that, that you listen to not only what the employees have to say, but also the process involved very honest feedback about the experience. And I think all of that is very important. I would hope that one of the outcomes that we're looking at, what success looks like, is that, that employees, one of them, one of the outcomes is that the employees feel good about their jobs and, and the job that they do and the job they do for our community and that they're proud of their work. And, you know, my sense is from all the comments that, you know, some struggle with that a bit, you know, for all the reasons that we talked about. And I think that's unfortunate, you know? People deserve to be, feel proud of their work. And so I hope that this is, this leads to a, leads everybody to a better place. Those are my comments. Anybody else? All right. Can we move on?
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman and other members of the city council. I appreciate that feedback and those questions. We can certainly get you that additional information when we return to council. Now I'd like to introduce Jean-Paul, the city's management analyst, to go over the cost recovery study and the results. Jean?
Thank you and good evening. As Deputy City Administrator Snyder mentioned, I'm Jean-Paul. I'm the manager analyst from the executive office. And I'm hoping Tisha can bring the slides back up so we can continue with the presentation. Okay, just some brief background. The last time cost recovery was examined was in 2016 and that work was performed by the FCS group using data from 2015. At the conclusion of that study, the city council took action in January of 2017. And when they did so, they adopted a new fee schedule, set the cost recovery target at 80%, and excluded five positions from that cost recovery with the justification that those positions were performing work outside of the permitting function. Next slide, please. Because the last significant adjustment was 2017. Because the last significant adjustment was 2017, we looked at data from 2017 through 2019, and this slide presents the high-level summary of cost recovery for that three-year period. As you can see, both revenues decreased and expenditures increased each year, which caused the overall cost recovery to fall from 139% to 73%. But 2019 was the only year that did not meet that 80% target. And I'll provide a little more detail on both the revenues and expenditures on the following slides. Slide, please. Here you can see the revenues from the previous slide broken down into six categories. Overall, these categories identify the revenues that DSD collects that can offset general fund expenditures in the department. There are, of course, other revenues like impact and mitigation fees, or pass-throughs to other agencies that they collect but are not considered as part of the study. Overall, the majority of DSD revenues come from three activities: building permits, planning and land use, excuse me, and then site work and engineering, which Deputy City Administrator Snyder kind of described in the organization of the new department going forward. Building permits, which are based on the project's valuation, generate the most revenues, as you can see from the slide. Next slide, please. There were two predominant trends in the revenues. First, there's a great deal of volatility based on the permits for large projects. In the three years, we looked at the building, planning, and engineering fees from the top five biggest projects, ranged anywhere from 34% to 55% of those revenues. And the staff report contains a table that identifies those projects and breaks them out in a little greater detail. The second trend, which is also connected to large projects, is there's a decline in the fees connected to expedited permit review. While the revenues from expedited permit review themselves only really fell from 2018 to 2019, there wasn't more defined decrease in the administrative fee connected to that. Next slide, please. When we look at revenues outside of the narrow three-year window, it does help provide some context. And when we do that, it shows essentially 2017 was an atypical year in the larger value of revenues, and that 2018 and 2019 appear to be within the more normal range of a $4 to $5 million revenues for those categories. This is the last slide on revenues, and I'll pause here and see if there are any questions before I move on to expenditures.
Not seeing anything.
Okay, next slide, please. Next, I'll briefly cover the revenue correction expenditures and then some of the trends behind the increases. So there are five main categories of expenditures each year: personnel, supplies, professional services, other services and charges, which include travel, training, and insurance charges for the department, and then finally, cost allocation to other city service funds. Just a few notes on this table. The total personnel costs are shown in the first row, and then the five excluded positions are identified as negative numbers in the second row. You can see professional services are the largest portion of expenditures after salaries and benefits. Those totals are a blend of both expedited reviews, which are backed by revenues, and then the other consultant needs for the department. More details are provided in the staff report to show how some of those professional service dollars are used. But there's a lot of volatility in that expenditure line just due to the expedited reviews themselves. Next, we exclude the long-range planning professional services from the cost recovery calculations. We felt the same justification for excluding those employee positions applied here. So the professional services for long-range planning, which predominantly does apply to policy work, are shown as negatives there. And then finally, from this table, you can see the impact of the creation of the IT fund. In 2017, the expenditures for supplies and equipment, and then other services and charges, were significantly higher than in 2018, with cost allocation being low and then increasing in 2018. So the overall net change from 2017 to 2018 of the increases for IT was about $400,000, and that cost was not considered as part of the last fee study, essentially. So that is a reason for expenditures increasing significantly.
Okay, Jean, we have a question from Councilmember Ray.
Getting off mute always a challenge. So I'm a bit perplexed. So when I look at revenues from 2017, 18, and 19, I see 17 being the highest revenue, 18 kind of midpoint, and 19 low. But when I look at expenditures, they're completely inverted. So how do you explain that we had our greatest revenue with our lowest expenditures? It doesn't seem, you would seem that they would move in the same direction.
Thank you for your question. This is Jean Paul again. I would say there is a little bit of disconnect between revenues and expenditures, just in the timing of when revenues are received and when expenditures are paid out. So it's not necessarily the same calendar year that a expense for an expedited review happens, and the revenue happens as well, because some of that revenue is received upfront, and the rest is received from when the actual permit is issued. So in between, there might be an expenditure that doesn't necessarily match up. Outside of that, like I said, there is considerable volatility just with those large projects, and it's hard to necessarily nail down explicitly why it was so high in 2017.
It would just seem to me that if we were trying to do cost recovery, we would need to do a better job of matching our outlays to our revenue sources. And so if there's a timing delay, we should be able to account for that some way so that we can say, so we can compare apples to apples. Right now, we're comparing apples to giraffes, and so it's hard to find meaning in the numbers in terms of a cost recovery.
And I would say I struggle, the same thing you're seeing, in terms of trying to find that apples-to-apples comparison. And this is the best that I could produce, and I'm certainly able to take another look if there's something specifically you'd hope me to examine. But this is kind of what the numbers are telling me right now.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Jean.
Okay, Jean, it looks like you can go ahead. I don't see any other questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. I believe I covered kind of these points just with the numbers on the previous slide. But as I mentioned, the information technology cost allocation was a significant cost that wasn't considered in the previous study, and then just the overall volatility in costs in the professional services. Next slide, please. So to provide some context to the cost recovery discussion, this table summarizes how some peer cities set their goals, both in 2017 and now in 2020. As you can see, most cities have increased their targets since 2017, but some have either decreased or simply stopped setting a target as well. For the cities with ranges depicted, they generally have different targets within the department for the different functions. So for example, Kirkland set a target of 80% for their planning division and 91% for their building division. Next slide, please. So to create a framework to help understand how the changes to the department, which were described earlier, might affect cost recovery, we created this 2021 budget scenario. And this is really just a rough estimate to inform the discussion. It's certainly not meant to preview or replace the upcoming budget process. But the takeaway from this scenario is the department could recover between 50% to 75% of costs, just depending on those revenues from large projects being volatile. And based on the range of those revenues, DSD would need to collect an additional $2,009,000 to $1.25 million in order to achieve the 80% cost recovery target. Next slide, please. So this slide contains a number of questions around the benefits or ability to adjust the cost recovery target, and we've included it here tonight so you can use it if you desire for your policy discussion, kind of following the presentation. Next slide, please. In terms of next steps, based on the direction you give us this evening, we will examine any fees for adjustment, plan to return this summer with the results, and be able to inform the 2021 budget with those results. Next slide, please. So this is the final slide. You've already provided some direction in terms of the department improvements and the staffing requests. So really, the second half of the slide is the focus for the direction needed now. The three simplest outcomes are listed here. Essentially, option one is maintain the 80% target, and we would look at fees to adjust in order to achieve that, kind of what I talked about with that 2021 budget scenario, in terms of the gap we might need to cover to make sure we recover 80%. The option two would be accept the forecasted cost recovery for 2021, but really make no changes to fees except the typical CPI adjustments. CPI right now is about 1.3%, so that's relatively small adjustment just for the Consumer Price Index. And then finally, the other option is you could provide another target entirely, and we would obviously adjust fees as required for that. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are. Otherwise, it's open for direction.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, we've got some questions to answer here, or at least to provide some feedback. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I have a question. So in our city, and if we maintain the target, and then in other cities that do have targets, do they change the rates? How often do they adjust rates to try to hit that target? And the reason I'm asking the question is, it seems that one disruptive thing that could happen if you change those rates too much could be that you have variable and unpredictable rates for different services that the city is providing. So I'm trying to understand what that looks like to actually achieve the target over time.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'll take first crack at answering, and then maybe I might try and loop in Director Keith Niven if he might have some additional information. But essentially, when we conducted the study back in 2016 and brought the results in 2017, the recommendation at that point was to essentially, every two years, take another look at cost recovery and adjust those fees so that, as you describe, you kind of have the ability to examine, did you do what you hoped to do? And if not, to adjust it. In terms of cities outside of Issaquah, it's fairly common for FCS to perform this work. I've seen it kind of throughout the number of cities that I looked at. But I don't know in terms of what interval those other cities perform those studies. So on that part of the question, I might hope if Director Niven has any additional feedback, he might be able to help there.
Good evening, City Council. Keith Niven, Director of Development Services. So when we did the fee study in 2017, you know, the information that we knew was that the planning function of Development Services was not even close to reaching a target that we felt was acceptable for cost recovery. So the main focus of the adjustment in fees in 2017 was to really bring the planning fees up to closer to matching the operating costs for the planning function of the department. The building component of the department has always performed at or above the target that the council expected for cost recovery. And so where we're left, I think, is with really doing a deeper dive on the engineering fees, as well as talking, you know, Jean and I talked about approaches. If the council wanted us to examine fees, we could look at all the fees, or we could just target the ones where we know that the city staff are providing services without recovering any costs. And there are a number of tasks that currently were asked to do that fall into that range. So we could start by looking at those kind of big areas where we know that we're not recovering fees, and bring back a list for the council to consider that would be, I think, targeted rather than looking at going back and doing a complete fee study for the entire department. I think that would be the simpler and probably more efficient process for us to follow if the council wanted us to go that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just wondering if we've looked at, you know, I generally support the idea of recovering as much as we can. But now we're in a whole new world with the COVID impacts and the economy, we really don't even know, but it's not looking good. So I'm just wondering if there's been any thought about how the rate of recovery, cost recovery, would impact the economic development in Issaquah? And of course, part of that recovery period for Issaquah would be getting our construction back up and running as well. So Director Niven, maybe, I wonder if you would have any comments about that and how we might be impacting future economic recovery if we decide to do an 80%, 90%, or 100% cost recovery?
So that's a great question, and it's, there's a disproportionate answer, I think. The smaller projects, the, you know, the home improvement projects that people like to do, you know, when we increase our fees, you know, cost of service is, you know, when staff time is generally 100, yeah, I use $100 an hour to estimate, you know, what staff time costs. And because our codes are so complex, and this kind of dovetails back into something Deputy City Administrator Snyder said earlier, because our codes are so complicated, it takes quite a bit of staff time to actually process a permit. And so if you are trying to convey those direct costs back to each applicant, the smaller the applicant, the more painful that tends to be. So our bigger projects like Costco's new office building, the bigger apartment projects that have been permitted over the past few years, our permit fees are a drop in the bucket for them. It's background costs, given all the construction costs and land costs that they have. So it really, it really impacts the small person. And so that's part of, you know, trying to think this through all the way, is making sure that if we do increase fees, how do we do it in a way that doesn't adversely impact the smaller businesses and the residents of our community?
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Councilmember DeMichele?
It did indeed. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Hall, Mart, Ray? No? So I'm having trouble, for a number of reasons, wrapping my head around changing the target. So I guess at this point, I'm kind of focused on, number one, maintaining the 80% target, and here's why. Number one, I think there are other important things that we need to be doing. And typically, when we get involved in a, in a different, whenever we're involved in changing this percentage or changing something about cost recovery, it ends up to be a long and more involved effort than we think it's going to be. I'm much more interested in spending our resources and our time on Title 18 upgrade than I am, you know, changing, you know, looking at an 80%, 90% versus 80%. I think we're within the range of other cities. I'm concerned about lower-cost recovery for a purpose such as stimulating or facilitating development. I don't think that's what our community, I have not heard anything in eight years that the community says, "Do something to create more development, please, because I just haven't had enough." We actually hear, you all know, we hear the exact opposite, and we just get railed on for it, which is the reason that we have the moratorium. Now, that so said, if there were, one of the questions in the materials here was if there was a reason to change a fee for a specific strategic priority, so either way... there was a reason to change a fee for a specific strategic priority, so either waiving it or reducing it. And one example, and I think we already do this anyway, at least in somewhere, is affordable housing or something else that we think is really important, and that the community has identified as a strategic priority, and it is a priority. And I don't also, I think also that we can't really afford during this time to waive fees or reduce the amount of recovery. I think that that is completely counterproductive. All the meetings that we've been having over the last two or three months have been, you know, hair on fire, and that is taking us in the wrong direction. But I think for specific strategic priorities, if we want to vary or waive or reduce, that would be one thing. And as Keith mentioned, and Councilmember D. Michelle, I think alluded to it, again, I'm tired from yesterday, that, you know, we don't want to make things more difficult for residents to do small projects on their home or for businesses to do small projects. And so, you know, I meant what I said, the last couple of meetings, we talked about this, is that I don't want, I want to make things reasonably less, or less onerous for businesses and residents to do, you know, reasonably small things. I don't want to make it more onerous. So for those two things, I could consider changing up the structure. But it's not a huge priority for me. I think we have a lot of other things to worry about. And so at some, at this point right now, I think I would be in favor of maintaining the 80% target and adjusting the fees to achieve that. I could be talked, you know, into different ideas, but that's, those are my comments right now. Councilmember Ray.
Sorry, kind of a late-breaking question. Hi, this is Chris Ray. So we've got information in the table that shows the recovery rate from other municipalities. Do we have data on the, on the fees that other municipalities charge for various services? How do our fees, not our recovery rate, but how do our fees compare to other municipalities? Are we less expensive, more expensive, about the same? Any data on that?
This is Jean Paul. So I think at this point, we were trying to keep it more of a philosophical discussion around the cost recovery target. If the direction is to adjust fees themselves, then when we identify those specific fees, we'd kind of compare them to other municipalities nearby and see how they, they could be adjusted but still kind of remain within the range of what's comparable to nearby cities. But for this portion of the study, we didn't do an in-depth comparison in terms of the fees themselves, just the cost recovery target.
I guess that's okay, but it makes it really hard for me to have a meaningful discussion about adjusting our cost recovery target down, which is kind of one of the things that's being kicked around, when I don't really know how we are doing in terms of our piece rate of revenue. So I'm still having a hard time, really, to be honest with you, wrapping my brain around, how come our revenue went way down and our costs went way up? And I can't, I can't rationalize that, and I understand the timing thing, Jean, that that sort of makes some, some sense. But I, but for me to get to what's the right thing to do and to go to Councilmember D. Michelle's point about, you know, what's the impact on businesses, I have no idea. Because if, you know, if our rates are 10% of Redmond, then that's a different discussion. And I'm not saying they are, but it's, to have a meaningful discussion for me around recovery rates, I have to have some better information on how, how we're performing, because it doesn't seem like we're performing very well.
Councilmember Goodman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to address part of your question, Council, Deputy Council President Ray. One of the reasons why we didn't bring a comparison of Issaquah permitting fees versus Redmond or Bellevue or any of our peer cities is because every city structures it a little bit differently. And so, much like our earlier presentation on water systems and how water systems and the capital infrastructure looks very different between the different cities, so do the permitting fees. Now, one of the options is that we could come back to you with information and looking at a specific project and how much that project may require in terms of development fees or permitting fees across a couple of jurisdictions. That's a possibility. But in terms of specific fees and what those fees cover and comparing those across jurisdictions, that's, that's actually pretty difficult to do because it would be like comparing apples and giraffes, to use your earlier phrase. So, but, so it's a, I guess I would ask a council, what types of information you would like us to come back to if you would, to you with if you would like us to do so?
I believe I skipped Councilmember Mart accidentally. I did not?
No, you did, but that's quite all right. This is, to Councilmember Goodman, this is Councilmember Mart speaking. So first off, I will plus one, Councilmember Ray, on needing to know absolute values before we would take action. That also speaks to our efficiency organizationally. So as I hear people talk about this, maybe I'm, maybe I'm a little bit different, but, you know, I, if I could wave a magic wand, I would probably go to 100% cost recovery, and then I would take that 20% difference between the 80 and the 100 and use that for code standardization and simplification. And so we go back to the community and say, you know what, we're going to full cost recovery, but we have a specific, some of this is going to specifically be used to both simplify our codes and see where there's regional standardization that would make sense, that would make it easier. I guess the standardization wouldn't make, wouldn't be as big of a deal for small, for residential applications, but certainly for commercial that would, that would, I would imagine represent the largest share of the fees paid, it would, it would be a big deal. So I could see doing something like that. I'm, I'm, it matters to me that Bellevue and Redmond are both at 100%, and that looks like Renton went to 100% as well. So I don't think we would be doing anything that would be out of the ordinary for our region. This is, this is a great place to, to develop. But, but I would focus some of that money specifically on making things easier going forward for further development with codes. Thank you.
Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I firstly just wanted to mention that we did receive one comment from a resident by email on this item, and that comment focused on making a framework to look at the problem that we're trying to address with this question, and then potential actions and solutions, as well as the history of the department. So, so that was the summary of the one correspondence we received on this. I, when I was listening to the other comments, I think for me, it does, it does make a lot of sense if we can, so to the, the person who's doing a home improvement project, I don't think it really matters if our, they don't see the cost recovery side. So optimally, we would have a very high cost recovery for the department so that we could, we could have that income for the city, but then we would also have low actual prices that the customer is seeing because we'd be able to implement the code review more efficiently. And it sounded to me, from the earlier comments that were made, that we might be able to achieve that, because if we simplified our code, we might be able to have higher cost recovery, less time spent on those items, but still a lower rate at the end of the day. And so if that's possible, and if, if we want to make sure that people do have a streamlined process for getting their permitting and getting their home improvement projects done, as well as a low cost at the end of the day, or relatively low or reasonable cost at the end of the day, that seems like a good, a good action to at least explore because if we think about it from what problem we're trying to solve, I think that, that, I think that that might work. But that's, it's not fully explored here, but I would like to explore that more.
Other comments from anybody? One, I don't remember how many folks were part of the last cost recovery action that we took. So it might be interesting, if folks want to look at real numbers, to send out, Jean, to send out, I mean, if you guys are interested, to send out the, the information that provided the actual numbers comparing the cities, just to get an idea, like maybe the last agenda packet. Because you could see, like if Bellevue was at 85, you can see what they were charging, and now that they're at 100. So, so there is, there were tables that were provided, so that's at least interesting. It's relevant. It may not be completely up to date. So that's one thought that I had. So, anyway, I'm not super passionate about spending a whole lot of time on this because I, I, but that's just me. I mean, I, I hear all of the ideas and I appreciate all of the ideas. I have very little confidence that we're ever going to, in the near future, end up in that ideal spot that we're talking about. And with all the other things that we have going on, those, that's kind of my, that's kind of my reason. Council President Hunt? Oh, wait, Councilmember D. Michelle, I think you're next.
Sorry, took me a while there. I agree with you in spirit, Councilmember Goodman, that we shouldn't spend a long, long discussion. But I did want to say that I do like the idea of having a kind of sliding scale, and I'm just, I'd like to incentivize affordable housing, and I'd like to give our smaller projects or home remodeling projects or those kinds of things a break. So I'm, I'm thinking a 60, 80, 100 might be a way to start. But again, I'm not sure that it's worth our time to be discussing and arguing over percentages here and percentages there. I would like more information, so perhaps the administration can come back to us with a more detailed information and a more nuanced proposal for how we might proceed with getting as much cost recovery as we can from the larger entities and incentivizing some of the other things we'd like to see happen in Issaquah. So that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. Keith Niven, if you're still there, could you, if you know off the top of your head, can you tell us what, what we do in terms of fees, if anything, to incentivize affordable housing?
Yes, so right now, the council's already passed an ordinance to waive the permitting fees for affordable housing, and we've included accessory dwelling units in that affordable housing group as well.
Thank you. I just thought, Councilmember D. Michelle would like to hear that, and for the rest of us just to knock our brains a little bit, so, thank you. Thank you. And Council President Hunt, you're next.
Thank you. I, I forgot to mention one thing that I meant to mention last time. So in the engineering division, in the breakdown of the cost recovery by departments, the engineering division, I think, I think this was pointed out, but I was just looking at the table, it has, even for cost recovery with large projects, has 42% cost recovery. So there's, there is, you know, I, I understand not wanting to get into percentages, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure at some point that that is the most important thing. But at the same time, if there's a big difference between the different departments, and then, as we talked about earlier, we're talking about reorganizing engineering into its own department, I think that better understanding how we might recover costs for that department at a rate that's comparable to the other departments, how the reorganization might help with that, I think that would also help me better understand both the rationale for the engineering department change, as well as the, as well as the target for the rates. I assume that if we, I assume that if we have an 80% target for all of the departments, then you would see changes to rates that affect those departments that would be different. But I, yeah, not, not totally sure. It seems like you could also achieve 80% overall if you averaged out big differences, which is kind of where we are now, and that, that doesn't, that also seems suboptimal to me.
Any other comments or questions for Jean Paul? And Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder has a comment, and then I also wanted to ask Jean and Andrea if you, if you have what you need and/or if you need anything else from us.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Andrea Snyder. That's actually what I wanted to speak to, was just trying to summarize the feedback that we had heard from council today. So we've heard, we've heard a couple of different things, and so I'm going to tick through what I've heard, and please chime in if I have heard you incorrectly, or if I'm summarizing incorrectly, if I'm missing something. So one of the comments that we have heard is that the city could spend a lot of time on this, as we have done in the past, but there's a desire to avoid that in relation to our other priorities. And so we don't want this to be necessarily a long process in figuring out what potentially a change to our development fees could be. We have also heard the desire for a bit more information, if there's specifics that we can provide from previous studies, or a better understanding of how our fees relate to other cities, that might be helpful for council. We've also heard that, that there isn't a desire to decrease the target at this point, that 80%, going, going less than that is not desirable at this point. Maybe it's 80%, or maybe we look at increasing it to 100% if that increase is going to help the city accomplish other priorities, such as the code update. Okay, that's, that's what I've heard. Am I, am I missing anything from that summary of comments from council?
The only other thing I can think of, and I didn't hear anybody say yea or nay, but I remember Keith Niven spoke to maybe some, potentially some, and these are my words, low-hanging fruit that we could, we could look at?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Andrea Snyder again. Yes, there may be certain areas of, of development fees that we charge that we could address our, our gaps in terms of what are the services that we provide, how resource-intensive are those services, and then are we really, are we really collecting revenues to help pay for those particular services? And that might get to one of the comments that, excuse me, Council President Hunt, I think I forgot to mention, which was this, this look into the data as far as the different divisions of Development Services or Community Planning and Development would be as it relates to that engineering division, and looking at those engineering revenues and really thinking about that by division as it relates to the other recommendations for improvement at DFC that we discussed.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Thank you for summarizing, Andrea. And I, I wanted to just add the one, one thing that I think we talked about, a number of us did, which was looking at if we, if we simplified the code or focusing on simplifying the code to make the amount of effort that goes into the, into the permit reviews, et cetera, to make that lower as a way to reduce the overall cost to the person applying for the permit.
Can you explain that again? I'm not following.
Oh, so it's not, it was my attempt at, this is Council President Hunt, it was my attempt at summarizing what I think a few of us were talking about in terms of simplifying the code, Title 18, et cetera, to make it, make the code more time-efficient to review permits and to implement the code so that we don't have currently the, what was mentioned earlier, that the small project applicants actually basically have to pay more, because it's a one-time, there's not the economy of scale. And so ultimately, that, that, that impacts the smaller projects more. And so to look at addressing that as the, as a sort of core issue rather than looking at adjusting the cost recovery fees independently of that.
Sorry, creepy crawly. Yes, I, I heard Andrea address something that sounded similar. And so I was just making, I was just wanting to clarify. Anyway, that's good. Never mind. Thanks. I get it. I got it before. I just didn't understand. It was the same thing you were saying before. Thanks. Anything else? Jean, Andrea, Wally? Then the next order of business would be to adjourn our meeting, unless I hear an objection.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Andrea Snyder. At the risk of interrupting my boss, the city administrator, as I see he may have a comment, but it seems that we need to return with a little bit more information. So we will figure out a time and a plan to do that and, and return to council. Thank you all for your second evening of hard work this week.
City Administrator Boggs, did you have a comment?
Andrea made it.
Okay, okay. We are adjourned. Everyone have a nice evening. See you later. Bye.